Called to order the city council study session for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for October the 21st, 2024. We have one agenda item, which is item number one, the proposed 2025 budget to study tonight. I do, we will begin our meeting, as we do most of our meetings, with a public comment on any item on the agenda, and I have no one signed up either to speak, either online or in person, so we will move past our citizens' right to speak and go directly to agenda item number one. And Mr. Goff, I assume that you've got a presentation here somewhere?
No, we're just gonna take questions.
We have a lot of singers and dancers here in the hall.
We do, we have our management team here and our budget team, so thank you. Good evening, council. So feel free to jump up and grab food during this, there's plenty up there. So happy to be here tonight to present our 25 proposed budgets. As you all know, the past five years have been a time of transformation for Wheat Ridge. City Council has been a catalyst for several very large and significant initiatives, demonstrated its support for regional activities, and supported staff on many key recommendations to strengthen the community and improve the quality of life of those who live, work, and play in Wheat Ridge. Some of those key initiatives, which we talked about this a few weeks ago, some of those key initiatives that have been advanced over the last five years, though, are community engagement initiatives, such as Let's Talk, and many more beyond that, our response to homelessness, sustainability, special licensing programs, improved service delivery, affordable housing, next chapter planning efforts, systems transformation, public safety, city facility safety and security, recreation center funding and programming, cybersecurity, and breathe? We don't want to be here all night, do we? And becoming an employer of choice. Well, you'll hear a little bit about all of those, a little bit more this evening. But as you know, implementing these programs and initiatives over the last five years has required substantial increases in capacity to provide the necessary staffing and other resources so that we were successful. We've been putting these resources to work for the community, which you all should be very proud of accomplishments we've seen over the last several years. However, all these resources have added up, which has resulted in increased general fund expenditures, which have depleted our reserves closer to city council's 17% minimum fund balance. So the budgets that we're presenting to you represents a story of cautious optimism. This budget does include over $38 million in funding for capital projects that have been driven by community input ranging from informal kitchen table conversations to the ballot box. This budget also accounts for other adjustments and reductions so that we are able to hit council's minimum fund balance and to start to rebuild our reserves closer to a 25% target. So tonight, we are here, as I mentioned, our management team is here, and we are here this evening to walk through our proposed 2025 budget. First, I would like to thank our budget team led by Ali Scheck, who spent many, many hours and weekends and nights putting this together, but also with the help of Mary Ann and Cole and Ree, the great team of, a lot of work. And then, of course, our department team, the department management team, and our budget contacts with throughout the departments. It really is, for a budget of this size, annual budget of this size, it does take a lot of time and effort to do this while we're doing our daily activities, so I want to thank all those folks.
Thank you, Patrick, and yeah, a huge shout out to Mary Ann, Cole, and the whole team here, really appreciate it. Just a quick note that once again, we did earn the GFOA's distinguished budget presentation award for the 24 budget, so we're really proud of that. We have to meet a number of detailed criteria, and actually Cole really took the lead last budget of developing our performance measures with Mary Ann, which I think is a criteria of the GFOA, and sort of talks a little bit about why we do it, because if you look in your budget book and you look at those performance measures, it really ties the work that we're doing to your priorities and holds us accountable to your constituents. So if someone ever asks you, well, like, you know, what have you accomplished, I would say, go look at some of those performance measures. You'll see a lot of data in there, and they're really impressive. But again, we're super proud to have won that award again this year. Thank you.
So a budget really is a tool to accomplish your goals and city council's vision. We reference this vision you see here on the screen as we prepare our budget and as we implement your initiatives. This vision's been in place for quite some time, and there's been some amendments over the years, but we always like to reference this and always like to repeat this every budget season, because it really is why we're doing what we're doing. So Wheat Ridge is an attractive and inviting city and community for families. Wheat Ridge has great neighborhoods, is a hub of commerce with a choice of economically viable commercial areas, and has diverse transportation. Wheat Ridge is committed to environmental stewardship, and its residents enjoy an active, healthy lifestyle and are proud of their hometown. Wheat Ridge, a great place to live, work, and play. Council may want to consider revisiting this vision at our 2025 retreat that we have scheduled for January 31st and 1st, as we continue into our next chapter. So let's jump into some numbers. I know you're all here to look at numbers, so let's get it. So before we can really talk about next year's budget, 2025 budget, we really need to look at this year's budget and determine, you know, how are we doing based on what we originally budgeted for 2024? You can see here that we are estimating by the end of this year, a slight increase in total available funds in '24, about $2 million more than we had budgeted, that was originally budget. Much of this was due to projects that were carried over from '23 to '24. And then you can also see here, spending, estimated spending has increased compared to the original budget by approximately $1 million. Again, most of this was due to those projects that were carried over from '23 to '24, and after the '24 budget was adopted. So despite this reduction in revenues and due to the savings and spending, we expect to end 2024 with about a half a million in additional fund balance than we had projected. So we projected, we adopted your budget with an estimated 17% reserve at the end of the year, we're projecting a 17.8%, as the chart says, dollars and percent. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's double, that's extra, that's an extra.
Turning now to the 2025 budget, we'll just chat a little bit about how we structure our budget, and we'll touch on the overall budget, we'll touch on the general fund, we'll work through our capital programs, Maria will lead that discussion, where we'll talk about those projected revenues, expenditures, and major projects, and then we'll wrap up with a discussion on staffing. So this is just a little reminder of how our budget fund structure is set in the budget. A couple of changes this year, you might recall in this discussion a year ago, Council Hoppi, I think it was you that brought this up, we used to have a police investigation fund that had a little fund balance of about $9,000. My understanding is that revenue would come in from the sale, potentially proceeds, I should say, from the seizure of property, and we no longer handle that ourselves anymore. Is that correct, Chief? That goes to the, we partner with the Metro Drug Task Force on that particular, on the issue of seizures. And so there's funding there that we can apply for, but essentially what happened is that police investigation fund sat somewhat stagnant, no new money coming in, and you all asked us to use it, you asked Chief to use it, so Chief spent that on the very cool and popular drone program that's been put to very good use this year, and he'll talk more about that a little bit later. So, all that to say, we did what you asked, there is no police investigation fund on here in 2025. The other big change in '25 is you won't see 2E. 2E has been replaced by the coming soon 2J. So we will be bringing you the new 2J fund. There is a proposed 2J fund in your budget, we're very proud of that. It was a lot to sort of get this all set up right in the middle of pricing bonds and issuing bonds, and we're about to close on bonds, Wednesday? Wednesday, we close on them. So our goal will actually be to bring you the '24 and '25 2J budget to sort of approve and add when we bring you the budget back at the end of November. So that's what's changed in our budget fund structure from last year. So at the top here, you see general fund, then you see our special revenue funds, then we have our capital programs, and that is a new section in your budget book, and that includes the CIP, that Renewal Wheat Ridge Bond Projects Fund, that's the, you know, the project fund for the projects that we're doing out of those property tax increment funding, and then, of course, the next chapter, Bond Fund, which we will also refer to as 2J. So when you go to conferences or you talk to people and they ask you how much is your budget in the city of Wheat Ridge, you have some choices as to how you answer that question. So your total budget for '25 that we're proposing to you is $95.6 million. About half of that is the general fund, that's $48.7 million, and what we're calling the capital programs budget, again, CIP Fund 40, or then the Renewal Wheat Ridge Bond Fund, and the next chapter Bond Fund 2J is about $38.8 million, and I think that is the exciting story of the 2025 budget. It's the amount of money that the city is putting into these capital infrastructure projects that this community has been asking for. So we project that we'll begin the year with about $59 million in the fund balance in total, we'll bring in about $80 million in total revenues, that $95.6 million in total expenditures, leaving an estimated fund balance of about $43.4 million. And again, that's the total budget for the city of Wheat Ridge. Looking now at the total budget by fund, you can see that the general fund's about 51% of the total. The total budget has increased about $5.6 million, or 6.2% from the original 2024 budget as it was adopted. And this increase of about $5.6 million can be attributed entirely to the new 2J fund and the associated project spending on infrastructure maintenance projects in 2025. So together, the CIP, Renewal Wheat Ridge and 2J account for over 40% of the 2025 proposed budget, so that's a lot of projects that Maria will be covering later in this presentation. Turning now specifically to the general fund, this budget conservatively projects very little revenue growth in '25 over '24 estimated results, at less than a 3% increase. So sales tax revenues are currently showing strength at just under 6% growth compared to the same period in 2023. I'm always like, wait, we're in '25? Nope, we're still in '24, and that was '23. But you know, with the upcoming election and with, you know, we're hearing rumblings about some pretty big chain closures, that we know that big lots will be affecting us here in Wheat Ridge. We don't know that, I mean, I don't think Walgreens, we know that Walgreens is closing some stores today, Wheat Ridge isn't on the list, but Patrick was mentioning there's some rumblings about 7-Eleven, so we want to take a real conservative approach to how we forecast sales tax revenue next year. So it's pretty flat. Here's how our general fund revenue is comprised, this chart shows the composition. So you can see here that sales tax alone comprises 57% of the general fund revenue, which is actually up 2% in composition from the 2024 budget. So in other words, in 2024, our budget was 55% sales tax, in 2025, it's 57% sales tax, telling you that we're starting, we're relying more and more on our local sales tax economy to fund us. And this is honestly, we're seeing the decline of some revenue sources, and so we are relying to a heavier degree on that local sales tax. And so due to the projections of limited growth in 2025 for revenue, the general fund budget focuses on the continuation of services as opposed to new initiatives. Thank you. This chart, you've seen this before, this shows revenues from year to year, starting in 2015 on the far left, and the portions of each bar graph in orange show those one-time revenues, and you might remember that we talked about this at the budget update a couple weeks ago. We don't actually have any, we haven't identified any one-time revenues in 2025, everything that we're projecting in 125 are considered to be ongoing in nature. The only 2024 revenue, it's really hard to see, there's a teeny bit of orange there, includes just $200,000 from the federal government for the Clear Creek Maker space. So you'll also note here the flattening of revenues, right, especially over this sort of last three years. All right, turning now to expenditures, our general fund expenditures, we're showing, well, it's a total of $48.7 million. This is a decrease of, well, my notes says 1.5% up top compared to the adjusted budget. I think it's about a 5% decrease compared to the adjusted, I think that's correct, because the adjusted budget, so just a reminder, the adjusted budget includes any changes that have been made over the course of the year. So one of the big changes that council usually makes towards the beginning of the year is we carry over, Patrick mentioned this earlier, we carry over encumbered funds that haven't yet been spent because the projects are in progress, and there was actually quite a lot in the general fund, and it was mostly vehicles. So in 2023, I think we carried over something like $1.4 million in vehicles that had been ordered between 2022 and 2023 but not yet delivered, plus $400,000 for the city plan, $100,000 for the economic prosperity plan, so that sort of drives up that budget. It is, thank you, Patrick. So this is, excuse my error on the slide there, it's actually a 5% decrease compared to the 2024 adjusted budget. There are no transfers, we are not proposing any transfers to other funds in the 2025 budget, and we project that this budget will leave the general fund with an ending fund balance of $11.5 million, of which 8.3 million is considered unrestricted, meaning it's not being saved for a particular purpose. And just as a reminder, as Patrick's mentioned, your fund balance policy sets the minimum unrestricted fund balance at 17%. So in the next slide, we'll have a quick look at that restricted fund balance. So you can see here that at the end of 2025, we project we'll have $550,000 left for the American Rescue Plan, those funds that have been allocated to various projects, we'll have $1.5 million set aside for emergencies per Tabor, right, we've talked about that, we'll have about $165,000 left for our Channel 8, to be used exclusively on Channel 8, and there's still an outstanding loan from the Fruitdale property of about $1 million, and that's considered a liability on our books. You can see here how the general fund budget is spent by department. So the police department's the largest, at 32%, with about 104, well, with exactly, actually, 104 employees in the general fund, and there's others in police in the crime prevention fund. Parks and Rec is next, at 16% of the budget and of the general fund budget, with 49 employees in the general fund, and Parks and Rec also has employees in the open space fund. Public Works is 13% of the budget with 34 employees in the general fund. Admin Services is next at 11% of the budget with 31 and a half employees. Community Development is 6% of the budget with 15.75 employees, and then an employee in the affordable housing fund. Municipal Court is 3% of the budget with 12 employees. General Government is 8% of the budget, and that includes you all, our elected officials, our attorney, our attorney's office, city clerk, city treasurer, city manager's office, economic development, that's sort of general government. So central charges at 13% on here does not include any staff, but it includes centralized expenditures like insurance and our medical benefits, rent for the office building down at 45th and Ludsworth, expenses like that. Thanks, Mary Ann. And similarly to revenue, here's a chart that just shows the expenditure history of the general fund with ongoing versus one-time expenditures. So you can see that decrease in 2025. Again, at this point, we're obviously, we don't include any estimates for carryovers in the budget, we plan to spend those funds this year. And again, the one-time expenditures in 2024 is that $200,000 for the Clear Creek Maker space, I don't think we have any other one-time expenditures this year. This chart shows the last decade of our budgeted and ending fund balances. The budgeted is blue, orange represents the actual results, the gray bar in '24 shows the estimated ending fund balance for this year, which as we've mentioned is 17.8%. And the yellow in '25 is the budgeted ending fund balance, again, unrestricted fund balance next year, and that's at 17%. So you can see that a conservative style of budgeting has helped us over the years and has led to healthier fund balances. But again, I think it creates a little bit of a false picture when we think about carryovers at the end of the year, so we're really doing what we can this year to limit the carryovers in the general fund, but there are just some things, like vehicles is a really good example, although I do believe we're catching up on vehicles. Is that true, Maria? Since COVID, it's better, the lead time is less than it was during COVID, there was a whole time vehicle making and chips, so it took us a really long time to get some of those, but you still will see some carryovers when we come back to you in February next year. So again, we need to sort of carry over those funds that are promised, and when we do that, the money gets returned to the fund balance in the prior year, and then it gets re-appropriated. So that's included in these orange, in the orange results, in the actual results. But you can see that, you know, over the last three years or so, our fund balance has decreased, right? Things have really started to flatten out, things are getting tighter, we're seeing less in salary savings, that was always something we could count on to raise our fund balance at the end of the year. And so again, that's why we're back with a conservative budget.
Thanks, Ali. So that's kind of a really high-level overview of the general fund budget and the numbers and what we're proposing for 2025, to get to that point and to provide a, present a balanced budget plus, oh, here it comes again, a reserve of 17%. Excuse me, we had to make a few adjustments, and on this slide, we're showing the major adjustments that we're recommending to city council this evening. I'll talk about first three, I believe, and then Ali's gonna talk about the last two, but short-term rental lodger's tax. If you remember back in 2023, council asked staff to look at diverting short-term rental lodger's tax revenue from the general fund to the housing fund, which we all believe and agree is a good idea for our housing purposes. However, between the revenue reductions that we've already discussed, the overall decline in the remaining lodger's taxes because of the work we're doing in our hotel motel district, a couple of those motels closed, we can talk about that more. So the Wheat Ridge Housing Fund, we believe, has sufficient funds in it right now to cover the full-time employee for 2025, whose primary work is to implement the affordable housing strategy and to manage the $2 million HUD grant that we're receiving. Additionally, while we believe it's okay to pause for '24 and '25, diverting the short-term rental lodger's tax from the general fund to the housing fund, we are possibly going to receive, or expecting to receive, the $1 million contribution from the development of the, the future development of the American Motel Project as part of that financial deal that Urban Authority has entered into with them, they are required to provide $1 million for our housing fund, so that should come in next year. So the housing fund will have, we believe, enough money in it in the next couple of years to enable us to put a pause on the diversion of revenue from the general fund to the housing fund. It's about $450,000 a year, so it's almost $1 million between '24 and '25, and unfortunately, in order to balance the budget at a 17% reserve this year, we need to, or we're recommending to put a pause on that transfer of money between the general fund and the housing fund.
You're talking about going from the housing fund to the general fund, right?
No, we move, right now, the lodger's tax, 5% of our 10% lodger's tax comes to the general fund, and a portion of that lodger's tax is coming from short-term rentals, and so we transfer that money from general fund to the housing fund. We're asking to pause that for this year and next year. Yes?
And have that go to the general fund?
To stay in the general fund. Stay in the general fund, yes. Additionally, the second item, we are evaluating vacant positions as they come up to determine if these positions are critical to be filled right away. In '25, we currently, or we currently have three vacancies that we're holding off on, and one in admin services, one in municipal court, and one in community development. As vacancies arise, we have a new process where departments have to vet that position and kind of take a step back and think about it, is this position, can this work be done a different way, can this position be reclassified to do something different, or can it just, can we just wait and hold off on that position for a while? So that is one area that we're looking at as well to control our budget. Also, just across the board, travel and conference reductions in our 2025 proposed budget, and there's really nothing new in the 2025 budget, it's kind of a status quo, providing base services and programs, and so most discretionary spending has been eliminated.
We're also proposing, included in this budget is a proposal to do things a little bit differently with some of the ARPA funds that we received, so you might recall, we received about $7.9 million from the American Rescue Plan Act between 2021 and 2022. We met our federal obligations already, that money has been, as far as the federal government is concerned, that money has been spent, we spent it on public safety payroll, the treasury gave direction to units of government that received $10 million or less, that you could essentially spend it in this very flexible manner, auditors said, do that, don't federalize your projects, report it in this way, based on your police department spending, but then, if you recall, we came to you for a conversation about how we go about spending, we'll call it now sort of excess revenue, if you like, money we weren't planning on, and you provided direction, and that's in that left column, that 7.985, that was the direction you provided to us in 2022 as to how to spend the funds. The middle column, '21 through '24, is the actual spending that we estimate through the end of this year, but we are, in this budget, we include a proposal to, we were holding about $1.8 million aside for a potential regional navigation center in case that project were to happen. That project has not yet come to fruition, or does not appear to be any closer to fruition, and the city at this point needs those funds in order to balance our budget, again, to your minimum reserves. So our, we're calling it revenue loss because in the federal government guidelines, the treasury's guidelines of how ARPA money was to be spent, actually, our entire allocation was in that sort of revenue loss bucket, so this still aligns with ARPA's intention, but we are proposing here that we put about $1.2 million of expenses in '24 against ARPA and $566,000 in 2025, and that leaves, that still leaves $550,000 remaining for other obligations or things that have been promised, like it continues to fund Porchlight, it continues to fund the Jefferson Center for Mental Health one more year, another year of the Wheat Ridge Clinician, High School Clinician, another year of Community Table.
And our navigation.
It funds our homeless navigation program for one more year, and it also funds the police department's civilian telephone reporting unit through 2026 as well. So by the end of '26, all those funds will be expended.
One other area that we're asking to make some changes, that's with our outside agency contributions, Carnation Festival, Wheat Ridge Business District, and Local Works, you can see in the table on screen, the original ask from these agencies, 135 for Carnation Festival, 90 for the Wheat Ridge Business District, and 329,700 for Local Works, there was consensus from council to put that in the budget if possible. We are proposing to provide the amount in the column on the right, $100,000 for the Carnation Festival, 45 for the Wheat Ridge Business District, and 326,200 for Local Works. We did have a conversation with Carnation Festival Committee Treasurer, he believes $100,000 is adequate for their budget next year. The Wheat Ridge Business District, they are just, I just signed it tonight, the purchase record, the check for Wheat Ridge Business District's second half of their 90 that they got this year, so they're just getting a check this week for $45,000, and I believe, I was told that they have about $45,000 in the bank right now, so I believe they can survive on $45,000 in the 2025 budget. I think if they- I think if they have, um, really good need and, um, in, maybe in the middle of 2025, they can come back and, um, depending on how our budget's doing, ask for more, if that's something you'd like to, uh, consider. And then Local Works, um, made an additional, um, small reduction in their budget, which they, um, are fine with.
And then finally, yes, on, um, these, uh, reductions, uh, back on July 15th, you heard from the, the co-chairs of the Community Partners Grant Program, the CPGP Committee. And, um, they came to you with an original recommendation of, uh, $200,000, which was this year's budget for, uh, giving to, um, nonprofit service organizations that benefit Wheat Ridge residents. And so their proposal funds 38 organizations. Again, the original recommendation that you provided consensus for was 200,000. Um, our budget recommendation, based on us making cuts fairly across the board in this budget, is 177,750. That is a 10% reduction to every organization that you gave consensus to fund. Um, however, the, um, Civil Weather Shelter Network dissolved, and so that Alex, uh, entire allocation is removed as well. So the budget message, if you turn to your budget message, you'll see the full, you know, what, what was, um, originally recommended, and then the final dollar amount that is included in this budget for your consideration.
Thanks, Ali. Um, so now that we've talked about some things that aren't in the budget, we want to talk about what's in the budget. Um, and so now we'll, we'll turn over to each, each member of our executive management team, uh, to give a brief overview of the things that, uh, they are most excited about, um, in this budget. And we will start with City Manager's Office and Mary Ann.
Great, thank you. Um, we're gonna talk about 2024 accomplishments and then get into 2025 strategic priorities. So first, I want to talk about our homeless navigation program. Um, we're really proud of them, as you know. They just came and presented you all last month. Um, they've gotten 143 housing placements, which is two more from when they, they came and talked to you last month. So we're really excited about them. Um, another thing that they're leaning into, especially as we consider these tight budget years, is that they're leaning into more of a grant funding. They were able to, um, they were awarded $75,000 through DOLA in 2024. So we're really proud of the work that they've been doing. Um, in sustainability, uh, you may recall that last week, we, uh, had the very first Sustainability Action Plan adopted by city council. So it was a big lift for our sustainability division. We're really excited for this guiding document, uh, and everything that's gonna come along with that. Um, and then additionally, in November, we will be having an update, um, from our residential waste engagement projects. You can look forward to mid-November, hearing a little bit more about the final outcomes of that. So it has been a heavy lift year for sustainability. They've done a lot of great work. Um, and regarding some of the programs, for the Resource Central, this year, we had 13 turf replacement projects, um, and replaced almost 10,000 square feet of lawn with water wide landscaping, and we're planning for similar numbers in 2025. So we're really excited about adding that new project through Resource Central and Sustainability. Our prosperity plan is something that you all have heard a lot about. You've heard from Steve Art and our consultant Puma regarding where we are on that project. The goal areas, as has been mentioned to you all before, are corridor nodes and redevelopment opportunities, jobs, innovation, and light manufacturing, attainability and quality of life, and business support ecosystems. So they're doing a lot of planning in the City Manager's Office this, this year. Um, and then when we get into council priorities, the IDEA Committee, the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity and Accessibility Committee just launched in September this year. They have a really great group. We are working on developing the work plan right now for 2025 with the group, and the, um, the IDEA Committee will be making its community debut at the holiday event in December, um, by tabling of that event. So we're very excited to see that. Um, and then the city council will be having its first legislative agenda, um, for next year. The, um, Cole Hay Slip is leading that effort, and he'll be taking that on at the, I think, later this month, early next month, trying to get that going. And then, of course, it's, uh, our fourth year of Wheat Ridge 101. That's what, um, it's a fresh photo from last week in there of Lauren, uh, and Steve Art. Um, we have a really great class, um, and it's, um, one of the changes that we made from the iteration two years ago is that we consolidated, um, the evening on local works and our communications to have one big engagement night. And, and with doing that, we had extra rooms, and now we're able to add an evening on municipal court and our homeless navigation program. So we're excited for that development there as well. Um, also excited to see if anyone can upset community development and economic development as the favorite of the evening. No pressure that everyone's in there. In 2025, um, we'll continue to do some of the similar work with our homeless navigation fund. We really lean into our bridge housing program, uh, which is partially grant funded through that DOLA, um, program right now. Uh, we spent a lot of money on moving kits and mattresses. We'll be continuing to do more of the same. Um, and we have a new partnership with a program called On the House, where we help to get furniture for, um, our folks after they move in. We're also, we have the aftercare costs to support the clients as they move in, and we'll be continuing to grow and support our community court program, which Kirsten will talk more about when she's chatting about municipal court. Um, for sustainability, um, we're gonna continue to offer our staple programs. So that's Fresh Food Connect, all this, the resources through Resource Central, which is Garden in a Box, turf replacement, and the Slow the Flow sprinkler audits, um, continuing with our Sustainable Neighborhood Programs and the Green Business Program. Um, and we'll also be, um, continuing with our annual events such as paint recycling, e-waste recycling, and our yard debris composting. Um, one of the things that we're gonna try to lean into more next year is making some of our city events more zero waste. So that's something that we're excited to tackle into 2025. We do have the, um, continuing the legislative agenda, the CPGP updates. Um, we're scheduled to come to you all in early next year to talk about the requested changes to the program to, that you all would like to see. Continuing with our IDEA Committee, and then we'll be on, as you remember, Wheat Ridge 101 is now in a, um, alternate year program. So we do 101, and then the following year, we do 102, which is specifically for Wheat Ridge 101 graduates. So that's what we'll be tackling next year. Um, and one really exciting fact about that is that every single Wheat Ridge 102 graduate from last year is now involved in a city board commission committee or in a city leadership role with like our, uh, Sustainable Neighborhoods leadership team. So we're really proud of getting these really great residents involved in the city and continuing their engagement. So with that, um, I'm going to turn it over to Kirsten Armstrong to discuss municipal court.
Thank you. So as, as you know, counsel, um, you appointed a, a new judge effective, uh, July 1st, Judge Lucero, um, that has been a very smooth transition. He's been very collaborative, um, checking on, uh, various different, you know, how we're doing our process and, and making improvements along the way. So that's been very positive. Um, um, he is also very supportive of our, of our community court and our special populations fund and, and supporting, um, those in need. So for our special populations fund, uh, we are using that, um, basically in four different areas. Uh, one is mental health services or evaluations, um, educational classes, um, that could be theft, conflict management, um, also with water or snack bags, and also bus passes. Um, so that's kind of where those funds are, um, expended to support our indigent defendants, um, our people, our defendants experiencing homelessness. Um, one of the things that Judge Lucero just brought to my attention last week was that there is funding, grant funding, uh, for bus passes. Um, so they have already expended that for 24, uh, but I'll certainly look into that for 25. So that was a great resource that he provided me. Um, for our, um, for our community court, uh, we are trying to support our defendants that are experiencing homelessness. Uh, we are holding community court once a month. We're partnering with, um, Jefferson Avenue United Methodist Church, that's at 44th and Kipling. They've been very receptive and very, uh, supportive. Um, their parishioners also, um, will, um, have clothing available and things like that as well, outside of what we are bringing. Um, so we're hoping that that's an easier, um, location for our defendants that can, um, get to that, um, and hopefully reduce the failure to appear. That's a huge failure to appear rate for people experiencing homelessness. Um, so the sentencing requirements, um, will be such things as, um, finding employment, getting a driver's license, or an ID, something along those lines. Um, the homeless navigator and housing navigators are present for that, and they, um, meet with the, the defendants that appear. Um, and if they're not, they don't even have to be a defendant, they could be just somebody that's needing resources. Um, so they will meet with them as well. Um, and hopefully, we can decrease the barriers to housing and employment for that population. Um, we also are required as a court to provide court-appointed attorneys, um, that's legislatively mandated, um, in two areas. One is that if they're in custody, we have to have a defense counsel available for them, uh, when the, when the judge sees them. The other way is if they're indigent and they're facing jail, um, they also may be, um, allowed to have a court-appointed attorney. Um, so the, um, chief judge, judge justice directive, uh, from the Cairo Supreme Court, that kind of gives us a guideline as to hourly rates. Um, we have seen a significant increase in that, uh, from, um, $80 in 2023 to 100, it will be $100 per hour in 2025. So you will see an increase in the budget, uh, for that line of count. Um, a portion of those expenditures are, um, reimbursed to the city through DOLA, uh, by the Defense Counsel First Appearance Grant Funding, um, so that it doesn't cover all of it, but, but it does cover some. Uh, one of the other things that we, uh, were excited about and are happy about is the court remodel project. Um, so that was, um, although it was, uh, very difficult to move in and move out and all that, um, it, we are very happy in our location and all of the, that, uh, they were able to, um, accomplish. Uh, we do have an ABA accessible window, uh, for, um, at, at our front counter area for defendants. Um, they also did, uh, front counter work, um, lighting, window tinting, furniture and painting. So that, if you haven't seen it, you can swing by and check it out, which is great. Um, so for 2025, some of our objectives are, we want to continue to monitor, assess, and expand, um, community court. Um, we are just, we just kicked that off here, you know, this past year, and, um, so it'll take a little bit to continue to build that up. Um, we, um, Judge Lucero is researching and implementing adjustments to the fine and fee schedule. We did some changes already that you'll see in the fee schedule for the 2025 budget. Um, so I look for more changes. Those will come, um, we'll advise you of those as they come to be. Uh, we also are looking at expanding internal collection, um, expanding to include a collection agency. Um, currently, we have been doing a lot of that in-house, a lot of that research, you know, trying to locate defendants. Um, but we are going to, we are looking at adding the collection agency piece so that we can help, um, to collect that, um, outstanding fines and fees. And, um, what will be our biggest heavy lift for this upcoming year is our court software program. Um, so we're kind of preparing for that, um, getting databases, you know, codes and things like that all cleaned up and ready to transition to a new system. So that's it for us.
Thanks, Kirsten. What a great summary. And I'll be brief with, um, admin services, just some things that we're proud of that we've accomplished this year. As we did kick off the, um, the systems transformation project, so this came out of a council priority in 2021 to improve and streamline permitting and licensing. So we are deep into the implementation of GOV OS for revenue and Open Gov for, uh, permitting and contractor licensing with, uh, Lauren and her awesome team. Um, so, and, and Public Works, Maria and her awesome team. So things are going well on that end. Um, we've been working very hard on this. Um, there's, I'm gonna just brag on Margie for a little bit. She's gonna pop up and be like, oh, my gosh, nope, she doesn't like being the center of attention. Margie Greer does not like that. Uh, but there is great work happening in the city clerk's office. We're very grateful to council with our support of the additional capacity there. Um, I think one of the things that, um, Margie's been working really hard on, policy and cleaning things up in general, but really working on a good, solid citywide records management program, um, and retention programs. So, um, just having more of a process and confidence in our records. It's funny, I, I told Margie when she started, welcome to Wheat Ridge, where people will ask you for help. And she's like, for records? No way. People will want to avoid me. People line up to talk to Margie about, I found this box of old emails from Chief Joe Casa from like years ago to do with pension. What do I do with this? And so, um, I will say Margie's rule is one in doubt, throw it out, but, um, with a proper destruction notice. And, uh, no, we're, we're making really, really good progress there. Um, in this photo, that's us winning the Lifetime Achievement Award, award, and I want to give some kudos to Council Holtein here, it's her idea, with the National Civic League. So we went down and presented at the opening session of the All-America City this year. We showed how great Wheat Ridge is, and we are now, um, a Hall of Fame Lifetime Achievement winner. I'm really happy with what going on with risk management and ADA coordination. Um, we, uh, just got done soliciting bids for another insurer. You may have, uh, recall that our, uh, insurance rates jumped dramatically, 42% this year, and we all discussed that it was time to go out and make sure that successor is competitive. We're just finalizing our evaluation of those bids now. Um, but there's been a lot going on in the risk management world. Um, the work associated with the digital accessibility that's at House Blue from a couple of years ago, 2110, has been a huge lift, um, for the organization. When I talk about admin services, usually everything we do supports everybody else's work. So it's not just us, it's everyone. Folks from departments around this table have been focusing a lot on this. I think in hindsight, I wish we had known, perhaps had a legislative committee established at that time to understand exactly how much work this unfunded mandate, um, all well-intentioned, all really important for members of our community that need to be able to access our services digitally, um, with various impairments that, and, and needing that help. But man, has this been, um, a huge lift. And we're, we're not, we are not done yet, and no one is done yet. We're doing very well. In fact, pretty soon here, you'll see a new look at your, look and feel of your council packet as we move to, um, um, accessible templates for all of your council memos and agendas and minutes. Uh, but that has really been a huge lift, um, and again, entirely funded, um, by, by us. Um, we are, we've, we've been doing a lot in cybersecurity for obvious reasons, so we're proud of that work. Our endpoint monitoring and detection, the know before training, um, we are the biggest threat to our digital environment. We, every single person sitting around this table, um, it's, it's the human beings, it's the users that will mess it up every time. So, you know, um, our, our, our network would be great if no one used it. Um, Chief just pointed at Karen. But, um, we've been doing a lot of, um, and this will never be done, and this work will never be done. Um, we certainly get some eye rolls around the amount of training, and that's okay. It's really important that we keep up on that. And then lastly, I just want to say, we, I'm really, um, excited about the improved licensing compliance that we're seeing, um, through a combination of strengthening our code. And of course, the chief was kind enough, um, to hand over an FTE, um, from Code Enforcement into our area. That's Licensing Leo, our compliance officer, um, who is focusing entirely on compliance. Um, his big lift was short-term rentals, but he's, he's doing it all, um, all, all of our home occupations and tobacco and massage and all of those things. So real proud of that. And when we think about next year, we'll be, a lot of it's continuing. So we'll be continuing the systems transformation project. We'll get Open Gov and GOV OS across the finish line, uh, make sure that those systems are solid and that our businesses, that our contractors are in good shape. Um, that is the District Four, very awesome meeting from a couple of weeks ago. It was so fun. Um, and we'll be continuing with our personnel systems, court, as Kirsten mentioned, which we received grant funding for, both the personal system implementation and court. So we're really excited about that. And then finance, um, we'll continue our work in, uh, cybersecurity. Um, we'll be completing tabletop exercises, focusing more on user and training, and of course, testing our systems. Um, we're excited, the HR manager of people and cultural is partnering with Mary Ann to co-facilitate the IDEA Committee. And so, of course, we'll be taking a lot of that programming internally as well with our employees in terms of training. We're excited about that. Um, we will be focusing on rebuilding our reserves. We'll be focusing on long-term financial planning, revenue recovery, and a good disciplined approach to personnel management and our budget. Um, and as insurance costs us more and more of our budget, we will continue to refine our processes designed to minimize risk and recover property damage. Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Lauren.
Thank you. Um, so in community development, our biggest, uh, budget item this year was the city plan, one of our most extensive public engagement efforts to one of our most extensive public engagement efforts to date. We mailed a postcard to all fifteen thousand dwelling units that we have in the city. We've had open houses, champions yard signs. We're actually teaching a full day of high school this week for the first time ever in relation to the city plan. It's exciting, yeah. We have, as you well know, taken very proactive steps to implement our Lutheran Legacy Campus Master Plan. There were some budget related items for that polling and mailing, but that's really been largely a staff effort, kind of an all hands on deck in the planning division on that project. We began implementing the affordable housing strategy, some good discussion on inclusionary policies and preservation programs. In building, we've completed thousands of inspections. A fun little trivia, that's a picture of your new hospital. That was completed this summer, over seven thousand three hundred inspections on that building over the course of three years. For comparison, Lifetime Fitness opened this year as well. That was just over four hundred inspections at that property. And engineering is excited to be almost through the first year of our revised NTMP Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, where we kind of overhauled how we engage the public in a really productive way. Next year, we've got a few new programs and new regulations. As Ally mentioned, we'll be rolling out the new permitting system, hopefully a smooth rollout at the start of the year. We're deep in the home stretch of implementation. We did get a grant through Prop 123 for that implementation. Once the permit system is done, we'll have the capacity to implement the new building codes. We were optimistic this summer when we thought we could do both at the same time. That will happen beginning of next year. We'll also keep implementing a lot of our adopted plans. We've done so much planning the last year or two or more. So we've got a long work plan. That includes the Affordable Housing Strategy, Forty Fourth Lutheran and here seeing the city plan. And while planning efforts will wrap up, engagement efforts will continue as we shift focus to implementation and also try to keep people informed of really the extensive slate of capital programs that we'll have. And then of course, our core function of managing entitlements and permits. Development has definitely slowed a little bit right now compared to the last five years or so, but remains steady. And we've got a lot of big projects still at Clear Creek Crossing and I-70 Kipling and potentially seeing sort of our first entitlement applications at the legacy campus next year if things continue. Thanks.
Sorry, I think that's my cue. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, or most of you probably are aware of, the police department budget consists of about eighty-five percent or even north of that of salaries and compensation for our human resource factor. Certainly, that's our most important factor. But we continue to see pressures on salaries from our neighboring jurisdictions. We continue to see pressure on compensation packages. So we know where our money is being spent for the most part. What's left is a much smaller pool of money that we use for our various programs, projects, equipment and objectives. I want to talk first about police accomplishments. I know staffing doesn't really get everybody as excited as it gets me, but none of my peers are up to full staffing, none of them, as I talk to them. And I can tell you right now that Wheat Ridge is fully staffed. We have a full complement of police officers. And in our professional staffing, we're only down one CSL and one telephone reporting unit person. Those are, CSL is a long-term issue, but telephone reporting is a recent development. We'll probably replace that person. We see that as a valuable position for that. So I'm very proud of, of the fact that we're able to attract and generally retain talent. And a lot of that is not due to this beautiful building or any of the other things and amenities we have. We're not the highest paid, but it is the culture. And part of that culture is here tonight and part of that culture is our community that supports us. So I'm very proud of our staffing. We did a lot of work to partner with our businesses and retail theft, something we see in national news all the time, where we think that our social media around that really sends the right message to our community that we are engaged. This is what we can do. We can't catch all of them, but we can certainly try our best. Emergency preparedness this year, we worked with Lutheran. We certainly had a full-size exercise out there a few months ago, or maybe not even that long ago. I think we worked, partnered with Council Weaver on some of the large, what I'm calling the large animal sheltering, but I believe there's a different term for it. We continue to focus on what, what may happen so that when it does happen, we've taken care of some of the heavy lifting on that. Again, our function is to produce public safety. So crime went up in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one. And since then, we've seen reductions year over year, twenty-six percent, four percent. And we're on track for about ten percent reduction now this year. So better than pre-pandemic levels by almost thirty percent. So we're, we're very happy with that. Motor vehicle theft, as you can see on the slide, is way down. Robbery is down, assault is down, and those were down last year as well. So we've seen dramatic decreases in those areas and those are areas of focus. I-70 and Kipling successes, calls for service are down at the motels, fifty-three percent and thirty percent within a half mile of the hotel motel. So the work on the hotel licensing program has certainly benefited me and our police department, but I think ultimately it's benefited our community. So you can see what we accomplished in twenty-four. Thank you, Mary Ann. Looking at our strategic goals, I put up twenty-four because what Allison said, we're continuing a lot of the things. There's not a budget there to really do, take any big swings, but we think what we started out with in twenty-four was important. Our strategic goals were to be proactive, not to be confused with just enforcement actions. That's, that wasn't the nature of proactivity. During this past year, we took proactive approaches to career tracking for officers to focus on training and an end goal. We think that helps us with retention when people can get to where they want to go. We focus proactivity and seeking out first-line leadership training to bring a sharper focus on the people who make decisions in the moment. Many of us who sit in the office get the luxury of time to make those decisions, but often our first-line supervisors are making them then and there. So training around that is something we focused on. We focus on better and more effective use of our overtime with proactive strategies to really look at and evaluate those more often instead of just putting a program out and letting it sit. And lastly, we focused on relationship-based policing and our continuing pursuit of more community trust and engagement. Our officers know what relationship-based policing is. It's out there, we work on it all the time. In twenty twenty-five, we anticipate doing all those, but also to reduce our call time responses because full staffing should allow for that. To retain staffing, hopefully Proposition 180 goes through and we get a large funded money from the Colorado government to put into and invest in training and retention of our staffing and reduce turnover. We want to increase our engagement. This year, we'll be excited to institute Avis, but that will roll over into next year. Avis is our speed enforcement and red light enforcement products out there that will allow us to push deeper into neighborhoods with our traffic engagement and also with our engagement in general. We'll also expect to see the delivery of our command bus largely funded by a federal grant. And we expect to see that in twenty twenty-five, but that's in the process of being built right now as we speak. We do have some challenges this year with our records management system. There is a crack in our consortium and we're looking at solutions there. Also with Rooney Valley Law Enforcement Training Facility, which is our range up off of I-70, if you've ever driven by that, Rooney Valley. Tomorrow, I'll go and speak in front of the, in front of the board for, hopefully for denial of a project that intends to move an RV facility up next to our range, which I don't think is a match made in heaven. Yes. Thank you. One of the things we're proud of is our leverage of technology. One of the pillars of policing called out by President Obama's Commission in the 21st century policing is still quite valid today, and that's the use of technology in policing, to augment policing. During this past year, you can see our commitment to that pillar. Of course, we're committed to all six of the pillars, but noted in, noted in the report. As called out earlier, our work with drones, facial recognition technology. I just want to report that we've had twelve uses of that. We said we wouldn't be overusing that and we've only had twelve uses, but they've been productive uses. Fifty percent of those have yielded a, what we call a lead, but ultimately led to some sort of arrest on cases that wouldn't otherwise probably have been solved. E-citation, we funded that two years ago. We finally have that out. I think Officer Taggart's over there tonight providing protection. But we started with our traffic units and they are working through the bugs to get that on the road. But we are in the trial and error phase of that. Avis again, and laptops. We're using federal grants to increase our lap types, which, as you don't know, we have to sign out laptops. Many agencies have laptops assigned to each officer. We want to be able to make the officers as productive as they can be while they sit in a hospital waiting for somebody to see a doctor or while I sit in a jail waiting for somebody to be processed. And so that's our technology. And another important pillar in that Obama, in President Obama's Commission Report was social media. Our last slide highlights and focuses on our communication with the public and building trust in the community. Strong and effective social media and media communications through traditional methods have enabled us to build that trust, enhance our recruitment, connect with our community and demonstrate the good work of the police in this community. Our last slide. I'd just like to say we receive many calls for service. For a city of our size, we, we receive a per capita amount of calls for service, the same as Denver and Lakewood. That might surprise some people, but our officers are busy from the time they sign on to the time they go home. Many of the calls we get are from you and your, from your constituents passed on us. We work hard to resolve those issues. We understand the many issues that confront us daily and beyond. And the support of this community has made our staff work harder to ensure that we're good students, stewards of the trust you put in us. The budget allows for us to be more engaging and proactive and responsive. With the successful adoption of this budget, we will be in position to continue to provide the services the Wheat Ridge community requires and deserves. I appreciate your consideration in the budget this year. Thank you.
On to me. Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to talk about our 2024 accomplishments in Parks and Recreation. First is the completion of Phase One of the Green at Thirty-Eighth. Thanks to all of you who came out to celebrate that accomplishment. And we are well into Phase Two of the Green at this point. We completed design for the Panorama Tennis Courts in the Tabor Lake Trail and look forward to beginning construction soon. We completed lap pool filter replacements at the recreation center. We began implementing projects associated with the USDA Urban Forestry Grant, which was a really exciting grant for us to receive. We've completed the engagement phase of the Wheat Ridge Parks and Recreation Pathway. So you all are aware that that's the update to our ten-year master plan. And it's funded in 2024, but will be completed in 2025. So as part of the engagement, we received over nine hundred comment cards. We have our statistically valid surveys still out within the community now, along with online engagement, which includes the same survey for those who didn't receive the statistically valid one in their household. And what I've learned from our subconsultant, ETC, that manages the survey is that it typically takes ninety days to receive the amount of survey results that are required for it to become statistically valid. And our goal was three hundred and we received that in less than a month. So our Wheat Ridge community is engaged and excited about this work. So we don't have any of that information synthesized yet, but we are really thrilled with the community involvement and looking forward to seeing what takes shape from, from all of these engagement opportunities. And above and beyond the pathway, we've heard from residents in other ways like the Let's Talk program. So some of the things that came out of that, we were able to install a fence along Kipling at Paramount Park that came out of that engagement, along with additional tree plantings throughout the community. We replaced ellipticals, flooring and carpeting at the recreation center. And one of the really exciting highlights this year is we now have a fully staffed aquatics team, which took many years, as you may recall, lifeguard shortages over COVID. So we are back to pre-COVID operations. And one of the tactics in a budget a couple of years ago was to include head lifeguard full-time positions. And we are now full in those positions, which took quite a while to achieve. So that's exciting. We achieved the goal of planting a hundred trees above and beyond the number of trees removed. We hosted twenty community events with eight thousand eight hundred estimated attendees. And I always like to brag about our grant specialist, Brandon, who has secured a variety of grants this year. And one measurement is the estimated amount that we received in 2024, and that's one point five million. So to talk about the 2025 priorities, mostly just carrying on from what we just discussed in accomplishments. But again, the Parks and Recreation Pathway, we hope to complete that. Well, we will complete that in 2025. We will complete the Green at Thirty-Eighth project, which is slated to be finished in the summer of 2025. Complete the ARPA-funded projects that were just mentioned, that we've, we've just completed design on Panorama Park and Tabor Lake. So we hope to complete those in 2025. And seeking additional grant funding for various projects and programs. And then what is quite possibly the most important thing we do year over year is focusing on the maintenance and repair of the existing assets that we have within our recreation facilities and parks. And now I'll pass it over to Maria Diavere.
Thank you. Yes. So as you can see from the slide, our accomplishments focus on a number of projects. And I want to first talk about our staff. So we've had the pleasure of hosting a few of you out at the Public Works Facility this past year. Hope to get more of you out within the next several months. And what I've heard from each of those of you who have visited is that, wow, I can't believe you get all this done with so few people. So it's all of the, what I call the non-sexy stuff. So taking care of the storm sewer, taking care of our traffic signals, our streets, plowing snow in the middle of the night, all of that stuff. And I'm really very proud of our staff for how much they've accomplished this past year, even though it doesn't show up necessarily always in the bullets. Just this past weekend, as an example, we had three emergency locates that staff had to respond to within one hour. We had four persons who came in to support the local works fun run. And we had one traffic signal response to that was first traffic signal that was out. So that's a team of three that has to, one of those people has to respond in any of those conditions. So very proud of them. We've also been able to complete or are continuing to work on, as the slide shows there, our Wadsworth Improvement Project, which has been a major focus for our department and really for a lot of the other members of the city as well. So far, we've expended forty-one million dollars just in construction alone. So that's coming from a variety of grants as well as city funding and then seeking reimbursements for that so that we're keeping up on that as much as possible. And we'll be coming back to council actually on October 28th, so next Monday night, to give more of a brief overview of the project and celebrate a milestone where we're about seventy-five percent complete at this time. The second bullet there is our major repairs to Young Field Avenue Bridge over Clear Creek that was identified. After the, you recall back in twenty, or excuse me, two thousand and five, the major bridge collapse in Minneapolis. CDOT went to a system where they inspect all bridges over a certain length every three years. They do that for communities as well. So based on that report, we're able to proactively identify bridge needs. And this was one of the bridges that was identified for some rather significant work. And then replacing critical sections of failing storm sewers. So that was all unplanned work. So the storm sewer, as we've talked about frequently and have shared, there's, those segments were not planned. There was nothing planned in the budget. So we were able to not only identify those dollars, but also then coordinate that work so that those could be replaced. And again, some of that was done by our own city staff. So when it's shallow enough and the size is small enough, we can actually do that work in-house instead of having to hire out contractors to do those segments. We completed facilities also falls and fleet also fall within Public Works. So we were able to replace those heat recovery units over at the recreation center. That was about a one point three million dollar project. Upgrading those, they had not been replaced since that building was constructed back in two thousand. And then we've completed some other major work over there too, as far as the parking lot was redone, as well as some interior work. And then finally retimed all the traffic signals along Young Field and then the Clear Creek area and along Thirty Second in order to get ready for the hospital opening. So we're still tweaking that a little bit. As new development occurs over there, we'll be watching that closely so that we can modify that. But really, again, those signals really hadn't been touched much in the last probably over a decade. So we're trying to be more proactive, make sure that, and react to some of the comments that came back in our latest resident survey about how easy it is to travel around the city. So then just moving to accomplishments, or excuse me, to our efforts for next year. We again, we hope to make significant improvement and look kind of the light at the end of the tunnel on the Wadsworth project. Again, we'll be Again, we'll be giving an update on that next week. And then we are in the process of wrapping up the Stormwater Master Plan. It's been a huge lift this year for Public Works staff. And hopefully begin implementing elements of that. We'll be coming back to the November 18th study session to talk to council about that and kind of show you the, the preliminary results from that master plan. Continue with our focus on the stormwater system and really being reactive as we identify new segments that need to be replaced. And we hope to kick off elements of the 2J projects as well, which I'll talk about in more detail in just a little bit here. And then finally, just doing some upgrades to our facilities, replacing some fleet vehicles. And then we will be kicking off our feasibility study with Anderson Hollis Architects to talk about kind of the next step in terms of our facility master plan and putting that into action. And I'll touch just briefly here on the fleet replacement. So as Ally mentioned earlier, through the COVID years, it was very difficult to get vehicles, especially probably in the past where we were able to put in that order at the beginning of the year and get them within, you know, three to four months. It really became a much longer process. In some cases, for some vehicles that had to be custom-built, it was a two-year, two-year process. So one example of that, that we're going to be ready for in 2025, we actually put the order in, in '23 for another snowplow. We're hoping to get that in January of '25. So we waited actually on the funding for what we call the outfit. So the, all the added features to that snowplow, the chassis in the back part of it for the '25 budget, knowing that we wouldn't receive that for up to two years. But overall, we're replacing eight vehicles in '25, which is really the bare minimum that we feel we need to go forward. And hopefully catching up again on a lot of those ones from the past so that we can hit '26 and continue to move forward with that in a proactive manner. We're limiting the number of new vehicles that we are, and we implemented this past year pool program as well. So our very low mileage vehicles are being deployed so that more employees can have access to them and can use them as opposed to getting mileage reimbursement. Take a break or keep going? Okay. All right, now we're going to dig in. So this is, this is really exciting. So obviously, yeah, I love delivering projects and really it is a truly team effort. So it takes, as you can imagine, all aspects really of the entire organization to deliver on this program. I'll be going in depth a little bit more with all of this, but really what this represents is over a $39 million investment. And as Ally showed earlier, you saw that in comparison to the dollar amount, about 58 million. For our overall general fund, 39 million is significant. And specifically for the capital program, we have five, approximately five FTEs within Public Works that are directly allocated towards capital projects. So two project managers, an overall program manager, and then some inspection and admin staff. So five FTEs and then plus whatever my time are dedicated to delivering this large program. So it's really exciting, really transformational, I think, for the community. And we're excited to dig into this. So again, if we go to the next slide, yep. So this shows, as you can see here, between the three major funds, which is the CIP Fund, the Renewal Wheat Ridge Fund, which was issued by the URA a few years ago, I think '21. And then our 2J, our Next Chapter Bond Fund, that represents that $39 million worth of investments. So that does include our debt service as we start to pay off some of those bonds as we move forward. And I'll touch first on the capital improvement program. So the, really the vast majority of this continues to go to our Wadsworth Improvement Project. So '25 again will be kind of that last year major investment. We hope to be able to wrap that up, the project in early 2026, if not sooner. And of those 12.4 million dollars of expenditures, the majority again is going towards Wadsworth. We have had to forego two years of the pavement or preventative maintenance in both '25 and '26 to allocate enough dollars to that. But as you'll see in a few slides here, we're actually going to be putting more of that 2J into those programs. So we're not totally abandoning that, just kind of moving things around for a couple of years. So just some highlights over the last year. As Ally mentioned earlier, we are wrapping or we've wrapped up all the 2E efforts. So that was again Anderson Park, the Clear Creek Area Access ramps, some improvements up at Ward Station, which were just completed this year, 52nd and Ward, along Tabor, all those new streets up there. And then finally, Wadsworth Improvement will be one of those last of the 2E projects to be completed. All right, so digging into it, again, as you can see here from the slide, 10.7 million is planned for 2025 for the Wadsworth Construction. And then our other kind of major effort, and we talked about this when we awarded the design contract maybe a month or so ago, was we'll be completing the design for the shared use path that goes from, on the west side of Wadsworth, between 32nd and 35th. So this will allow for, once that's constructed in '26, that will allow for bike, ped access on the west side of Wadsworth, all the way from 30, or well, essentially City Hall, all the way to I-70, once that's completed. And then finally, we'll be doing our annual Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, where we do various efforts throughout the community based on that input. Our long-term CIP funding strategy. You know, typically we have in the past put in two and a half to three million for annual preventative maintenance. That covers primarily street maintenance. So mill and overlay, our annual crack seal, that sort of thing, as well as striping, upgrading our pedestrian ramps to conform to our transition plan that's required through the ADA, as well as again, traffic management. So that's really the basics. So all of that, that base level maintenance needs that we need to do to keep up with what's out in the right of way and try to do that each year and try and do that around the city. Our 2023 resident survey actually noted some decreases in what were considered the condition of city streets. So it's actually dropped to its lowest percentage ever. So since, I think that was a question that's been on that survey since 2004, condition of city streets is now rated as only 38% is excellent or good. And it's been as high as 60, mid 60s in the past typically, 50 to 60s. Similarly, our condition of sidewalk has dropped down to 34%. So really looking to continue to make sure those investments are there so that we can keep the stuff that we already own in good condition. And I'll talk a little bit about our Renewal Wheat Ridge Bond Projects. So these were, the bonds for this program were issued in November of 2021. And they constitute about just under $36 million. And a good portion of those have gone to a variety of projects within that, that, those three program areas. So we kind of broke it up by region or area. And as you can see there, we're planning that the majority of the work, except for our Ward, TOD, Ped Bridge and Trail, will be expended this year. So there was, again, those were issued in '21. So our hope is by probably end of '26 to have most of that funds expended. So specifically within the Applewood area, we'll be working on a, the design for a bus terminal. This will bring the 28 and the 32 to the Clear Creek area. And this is a requirement from RTD where you need an actual bus terminal along with a driver relief station, basically a bathroom, in order to be provided there. And we hope to build this as a three-bay so that we can also get the 38 route over to that site as well and re-instate bus service on, along the 38 route. So we're in, or we're continuing our conversations with RTD to make sure that that's still on the table so that if we build that, they will come. Two projects that will carry over from, that aren't shown here, but will likely carry over into 2025 based on timing, is the Youngfield Beautification Project along the, essentially the east side of I-70 from approximately Taco Bell, our southern border along at Youngfield or the I-70 off-ramps, eastbound off-ramps, all the way up to 40th Avenue. So putting in monuments, putting in new landscaping, and really just kind of cleaning that area up, making it look a lot better in our, one of our primary commercial corridors. And then secondly, we got a grant for, to add some bike lanes underneath I-70 all the way from where they end essentially at Wright Court, which is a little bit to the east of that shopping center, all the way under I-70 and then connecting into 32nd Avenue where Wheat Ridge connects up to unincorporated Jefferson County. So that's a project that will be constructed this spring. And I've learned from Jefferson County that they intend to continue those bike lanes further west down into Golden at some point in the future here. So really again, continuing and looking at those blurred lines between the county, between us and other cities, when we start to make these improvements so that there's longer continuous bike lanes and other facilities that people can use. And then the Kipling area. So this was the Kipling Corridor all the way from I-70 down to 38th Avenue. Our focus has been in the past a lot on some rec center projects, and that will continue. So the bridge that leads into the rec center that you go over, you might not even realize you're going over a bridge or a culvert area there, but that needs some repair, so we're going to take care of that. We're in design right now, so that will be completed in 2025. We're going to also paint the exterior of the building and upgrade the lighting in there, which will also hopefully save some, on some electric costs. So continuing our major investment in the rec center, which has always been a priority for city council. And then finally, with the Fund 40 or the Renewal Wheat Ridge is our Ward Station area projects. And the focus again up there has, is really going to be on that pedestrian bridge and trail. We're excited, we're in the right-of-way process. We're continuing that right now to, to get all of the necessary right-of-way, working closely with RTD as well as BNSF, because BNSF still actually owns those railroad tracks, they're just leased to RTD. So a lot of those different partners, Public Utilities Commission, just a lot of different entities are involved in that. And we're hoping to finalize those plans within the next few months and get that out to bid so that construction can begin probably mid-part of 2025. It will continue into 2026. And again, that will wrap up all of the Fund 40 efforts. And then 2J. So again, as I talked about, I believe it was in April when we laid out our, our initial list of projects, this really is a transformational opportunity. So going back to what we've heard from, through the Let's Talk program, through our resident survey, there's a high level of interest and need, as our citizens feel, to invest not only in our corridors, but also in sidewalks and bikeways. So this program really focuses on those aspects, as well as some of our drainage improvements that are needed. Overall, it's about a, we anticipate spending about $13 million this year. And again, hitting that, kind of doing some of those quick strike things. But that 12.8 million does include 5 million, which is our debt service that needs to be paid back. So it's roughly about just under 8 million that we'll be investing in 2025 to get that program started. And that's overall, we anticipate probably about a five to six-year timeframe. So specifically, we'll be investing, again, doing some storm sewer repair work of the emergency kind, so about 1.8 million. Hopefully starting to get to more proactive, but I'm pessimistic, yeah. We barely touched, yeah, we're, less than 1% has been touched, so. Then the corridor project, let's talk about something funner, corridor projects. So we talked to maybe about two months ago now about the 38th Avenue Refresh. So that's really between Wadsworth and Harlan. And kicking off that design to take that segment to the next step, upgrading those, the pedestrian lights out there from the Excel-owned ones. And again, building on everything that's going on at the Green to kind of really just give that whole area facelift and a refresh. We're going to be doing a study for traffic signals. So the one at 44th and Eldridge is an existing signal. If you go out that area, I feel based on the volumes that that's a good candidate to be considered for a roundabout at that intersection as opposed to a, a traffic signal. So we'll be looking at that in that study. And then at 44th and Tabor as well. So that's on the corner where Heine's is, if you're familiar with that. A lot of near-miss accidents there. That came out of the 44th Avenue Subarea Plan that was completed last year or the year before. So really see the need for a traffic signal there as well. So we'll be doing both of those in that same study. 26th and Harland, the roundabout, that's a reimbursement back to the city of Edgewater, as we talked about at the last city council meeting, where they'll be leading that effort to construct the, the roundabout. And we'll pay for our portion essentially, which is roughly half. And then here's where we're going to actually invest in the pavement management. So instead of through the typically, which is through the capital improvement program, we're using funds as we planned in the 2J to start aggressively going after our pavement management. And to recall, we've divided the city up into six zones. And we'll be attacking each zone over the next six years and upping the dollar amount a little bit to go after that. And then finally, there are sidewalks and bicycle facilities. So again, our, one of the new questions that I think was added to the resident survey was our condition of our sidewalks. So specifically, they have talked about previously with the question was ease of walking. But now it was condition of walks, and 34% noted that as either excellent or good. So probably a ways where we could improve there from 34%. And part of that is just making sure that our existing network is in good condition. So going through, we got a council, a call tonight, or Councilmember Weaver got a call tonight from a potential issue that we'll take care of. And just being again, more aggressive, looking at each of that by zones and making sure that we're eliminating not only those, those trip hazards, but also anywhere where it's cracked and significantly deteriorated so that we can make sure that the system that we already have is in good condition. Adding new pedestrian ramps, making sure they're in compliance with our ADA guidelines, which continue to change all the time. And then also what will start in 2025 is our sidewalk gap construction. So we're hoping to not only design that, but build several of those segments around town too, to start to make those little connections here and there so that there is more of a network approach. And then finally, just to touch on, our next thing is that, well, we do talk about all the things, the great things that 2J is going to provide to us. That was 75 million is the anticipated revenue from that. But the project list that I showed back in April is about 122 million. So there's a gap there. So our needs are greater than our funding, as usual. And our intent is that we would pursue grants where possible, because we really can when there's a significant amount of city funds, that we can leverage those to get hopefully federal and state grants as well. But there may still likely be a gap there. So it may come down to some choices where, or have to find other sources of funding if we can't meet all of that. And then just another plug for our stormwater system maintenance and infrastructure. Again, we're wrapping up that stormwater master plan. We're going to be coming back to you on November 18th to talk about that in more detail. And we are proposing a stormwater utility fee because really it's 2J, it would not be able, likely to touch every, all the needs that are within that to address the capital, our operations and maintenance needs of that stormwater system. And then finally, just a couple of other things, you know, that really haven't hit the radar yet. But we have 45 signals within the city. We, I think again, staff does a wonderful job of maintaining those, kind of stealing parts from old ones to use again. Putting some, some gum and some wire in place when we need to, and just kind of keeping them always running. But at some point, that will, they, they. But at some point that will, they, they reach the end of their life and components of them have to be upgraded as well. So that's coming. And then I touched on already our facilities master plan and where we need to go from there. So as you can, if you recall, the dollar amount that came out of that was pretty high, you know, over $200 million. And we're hoping, you know, to refine that, get to some better ideas, but that still becomes an unfunded cost at this time until we find some additional funding sources for that. So with that, I'll turn it back to Patrick. Thank you.
You'll turn it to me.
Oh, sorry.
It's fine. Um, I will be talking about the open space fund. So with the beginning fund balance of 1.6 million and the ending fund balance of 1.5 million, our projected revenues are 5.2 million and expenditures 5.3 million for 2025. And of course, the largest portion of that is the green at 38th, which we previously discussed. That's again, on track to be completed in the summer of 2025. And as a reminder, we did receive nearly $1.7 million in grant funding through, through GOCO, Doola, CDOT, Waste Management and the Gates Family Foundation for that project. Also on the list of projects is the Randall Park Garden Project. You may recall YY, Brandon and I coming to a city council meeting to talk about happiness gardens and the Randall Park Project was a portion of that. And this project has been delayed simply because we made an attempt to secure grant funding to supplement that budget to do a greater project of having a greenhouse with educational space. And we were not successful with that grant application, but we will continue looking. So that's just on hold and hopefully will be underway next year. And then listed on the slide is other maintenance projects. So while our primary focus is on completing the green at 38th in 2025, this budget contains grant funds and matching dollars associated with the CDOT tap grant and the Jefferson County Open Space Trails Partnership Program, both funding major Clear Creek Crossing and park improvements. So specifically, the Kipling Crossing Study, the Clear Creek Crossing Connector Trail, erosion analysis and design in the Hayward Park Trail. And the Hayward Park Trail contract is actually coming to you next week for approval. So we hope to actually start that project in the next month or so. Last week, we learned that our most recent Jefferson County Open Space Trails Partnership Program application was recommended for funding. And knowing that we were approaching a conservative budget, what we requested in that application was matching funds for the CDOT tap grant, which then frees up funding in the open space budget that we budgeted already for a match. So that's really great news that we hope will be fully funded. And Fund 32 continues to fund salary and benefits associated with nine full-time employees as Ally mentioned earlier, specifically in parks, forestry and open space. And then mentioned on the slide is the forestry improvements that are associated with the USDA Urban and Community Forestry Grant, which funds significant tree planting, forestry staffing costs, technology upgrades in the field, supplements existing planting and tree supply budgets, and has allowed us to upgrade our tree inventory software. So next we'll talk about the Conservation Trust Fund. So the beginning fund balance in the Conservation Trust Fund is 210,000 and an ending fund balance of 160,000 with projected revenues at 450,000 and expenditures at 500,000. This budget is typically used to take care of the assets that we have, and that's exactly what we're planning for next year. So we have 120,000 leisure pool repairs, that's specifically replacement of a modulating floating valve, if anybody knows what that is. The Active Adult Center portico, which you'll see at the entry of the Active Adult Center, and we've had residents specifically mentioning that needs some repair. So we're excited to tackle that project next year. The rec center closure week, we always budget funds that we share with our facilities manager to take care of projects throughout the recreation center. We will be spending money on 16 indoor cycles at the indoor leisure pool, either the replacement of the diving board or a climbing wall or some other amenity similar to that. Rec center slide repairs and rec center lobby furniture, if you've been there recently, that lobby furniture is in desperate need of repair or replacement. So that's all for me.
Thank you so much, Karen. I hope you all agree how exciting this budget is when it comes to our capital infrastructure and our open space and CTF programs. Super exciting. We just have a few slides left. We're in the home stretch here. I'm just going to touch very briefly on staffing and benefits. You know, we don't make widgets or gizmos, we provide services. And so the lion's share, about 70% of our general fund budget goes to, goes to staffing and benefits. So if we can, we can look at the next slide. The, our proposal in this budget is to add two FTE to be assigned to and paid out of the 2J Next Chapter Bond Fund that has been cleared with our bond council. These will, this will be a, one FTE is the Infrastructure Projects Manager. The work group currently consists of a Capital Projects Manager, two Infrastructure Project Manager. This would add one to really be dedicated to those 2J projects, plus a project technician. You might recall in the financial audit this year, one of the things we, we know we struggle with based on our very small team here at the city is how well we, we track and stay on top of IGAs, contracts, POs, billings, reimbursements. It's a lot of administrative work for both the project managers and the finance and procurement team. And this would add a project technician to really help with that. So that's, the proposal here is that we increase our FTE by two in 2025 with the two, again, just out of the 2J Next Bond Fund. Otherwise, we do propose to move one employee from the general fund to the Crime Prevention Fund. The short-term rental, the Crime Prevention Fund as a reminder is funded, its primary revenue source is 30% of our lodger's tax. And of course, with the short-term rental program and those, those bookings paying lodger's tax, that fund is actually doing quite, quite well. It's increased significantly over our traditional hotel, which is decreasing with our new licensing requirements. So in, in order to help the budget, we propose to move one crime prevention officer into the crime prevention fund from the general fund. And then otherwise, three things we're doing as mentioned earlier is we are not funding three positions. One is the Admin and Maran Council. Instead, Riann and Curry and Becky Blazer will continue to support you. One is the judicial assistant one in municipal court that's been vacant for a couple of years now, I think, Kirsten. And the other is the .75. It was a time limited position a few years ago up in community development to help with plan review and inspection. So the plan is to, those are still on your staffing table as FTE that are approved by you, but we do not, we have not included funding in those positions, they're all vacant in the 2025 budget. We are entering year 13 of our pay-for-performance plan, so that includes everybody except officers in the step plan. That's where employees, we essentially reward good performance here in Wheat Ridge, and we've been doing so again for 13 years. Employees can earn potentially up to 5% of an increase. We do propose to fully fund increases in 2025. We, the average is between 3.5 and 3.8%. The city, the city did conduct a compensation analysis and market study this year in 2024. It has resulted in some changes to the draft pay plans, which you see in your book. We'll be finalizing those in the next few weeks. In general, it was determined that the city is paying at market. So as this is such a lean budget year, there's, there's really no other changes than the pay-for-performance and the step, the officer increases. There's no proposed changes at this point to pension. In total, this budget allocates about $950,000 in wage increases across the city, and that's inclusive, inclusive of, you know, pension, FICA, Medicare and the ancillary costs. That's about a 3% decrease from the amount that was allocated in the 2024 budget. 2025 will be our third year of providing benefits through the Colorado Employer Benefit Trust, which allows us to offer both United Healthcare and Kaiser's options. And our increase in 2025, based on our loss ratio of our employees, will be 8.5%. And with that, I'll turn it back to Patrick.
Great. Thanks, Ally. We are almost done, as Ally said. Couple more slides to some wrap up here and conclusions, and then you guys may want to take a break, I don't know, and then we'll be ready for questions. So I, I hope you, you seen and heard this evening that we've had a very extremely productive year and, and still plan to next year. As we discussed at the budget update that we had earlier this month, this past year, five years has been a time of true transformation for Wheat Ridge. The current and prior councils have been catalysts for change and have been willing to tackle a lot of challenges and take on major initiatives. This workload symbolized here by the man in the slide, is it up there? Juggling everything, that's all of us, that's all of our employees. So as Maria said, I think we're all very proud of our, yeah, is it all women? Mostly women. We're very proud of our employees. We do, that's kind of comes with a smaller agency like us, you do wear many hats. And I think the people that like that do, do thrive in that environment. We just want to make sure that we're not juggling too much. We want to get everything right as well. So the story of the 2025 budget is, is one of conservative optimism, as I mentioned earlier. You know, while inflation has calmed down quite a bit, there still are fairly large cost increases in, in different areas that are outpacing our revenues. Sales tax revenue, thankfully, our largest revenue source, as Ally mentioned earlier, is starting to become even a larger portion of our revenues, showing great strength and promise, as I think we're up about 6% right now, which is really good for Wheat Ridge. But other revenues, as we mentioned, are slowing, particularly in the development world, but I'll talk about that a little bit more here as well. The city does continue to see turnover of long-term employees due to retirements. Recently, we've seen quite a few in police and public works. And I think in the next year or so, we'll start seeing them in parks and rec. But it's very long-term employees that are moving on, and so that will be a loss. As, as Maria discussed this evening, our, our capital program is very exciting. So we do thank council for your support in getting that funding for us. I think we built the trust in our community over the last decade or so that we know how to spend money and we do it right. So I thank our citizens as well as, as supporting us there. The work on the Wadsworth project, bringing that to fruition has been very intense and really stressing the CIP budget here the last year or two. But we're almost done, we're almost to the end there, so looking forward to that. And then as we mentioned, we're going to have 30, almost 39 million and more capital projects coming online this next year. So that's all very good news, and it's great. And then as you're aware, again, as Maria mentions, we still face many issues with our storm water system that unfortunately, I think our current funding is not going to fix everything. But we are excited to bring a discussion forward to you here at the end of the year on a, on our storm water master plan. So looking at some opportunities, as I mentioned, I think we are very optimistic about our city's future. I think the 2025 budget again is just taking a little bit of a step back and being a little bit conservative until we, not adding too many new things, really focusing on our, on a work that's on our, our work plan today. But in this next chapter, the city will continue, as we've been mentioning, to invest in equitable infrastructure and community amenities, improvements across the city through our 2E, 2J and YRA bonds. As we mentioned, we have almost 39 million in streets, sidewalks, drainage and park projects, completion of the Clear Creek Crossing developments, the green at 38th, initiation of the Lutheran Legacy Campus developments are really going to be some of our primary focus areas in the city in next year. Overall, developments has slowed a bit in 2024, but we are starting to see a resurgence a bit, resurgence again. I bet, I think Lauren told me recently that it's the end of the year and everybody's trying to get their, their plans into us. So some of the projects that have stalled over the last few years or were a little bit slower than, than projected are starting to come in. And we do have a, a good pipeline in the future, which is very promising for Wheat Ridge. Clear Creek Crossing will start construction on many of its Phase 2 projects in '25 and '26. Those include a second hotel. So, so we were talking about lodger's tax has been impacted a little bit by our lodging licensing program. Couple hotels have closed, they're decided to move on, but we're going to replace those with two brand-new hotels out at Clear Creek Crossing. So I think our lodger's tax revenues are going to bump back up. We have a Bird Call Restaurant, Bank of America, Primrose Daycare, Bonfire Burritos, and then the Lookout Restaurant District are all hopefully on track to finally cross the finish line here at the, probably next year. Actually, I think in January 13th, I believe, we are bringing a, an amendment to the ODP for the Clear Creek Crossing development that will allow for all these, these new things to happen. The Gold's Marketplace is nearly full, very exciting with one additional tenant still coming. The, the Works, what did we say this, Mayor?
Bikes, beer.
Bowling.
Bowling.
Burgers. I think that's going to be.
4B.
4B. I think it's going to be a huge success to an already very successful shopping district over there. Applewood Shopping Center continues to thrive with additional investments over the last couple of years. We will see a few new tenants, I believe, here the next few years. And even during the Wadsworth construction, believe it or not, there's companies investing in our Wadsworth Corridor, which is, is a very good sign. So I, I believe once the construction's finally done, I think we're going to see even more investment. There's really a lot of parcels that are ripe for reinvestment. So very excited about that future. 38th Avenue is really continuing its rebirth still as one of the city's primary gathering places. The green, I think we're all very excited about that. I think that's really going to be a catalyst for that corridor. It's going to be completed next summer. Businesses are continuing to reinvest in, in 38th too. See, it's a Colorado Plus just opened after a major remodel. Wolf and Wildflower has new owners, I know they're making some changes there. Stines Crate and Get Right Bakery just have a brand-new patio out front, which has really changed that street front. Little Brazil is open now on 38th Avenue, and I just think there's still many opportunities. I met with a property owner this weekend who's got some ideas and thoughts, so about some additional development. So very excited about that. So again, as noted earlier, the 25 budget is, is really built around a conservative optimism for Wheat Ridge's future. Although many new initiatives or expenses are not included in the proposed budget, we will continue investing a significant amount of money and time in our current work plan that y'all heard about this evening. The city will continue to focus on engaging with residents next year, as we have been doing, to ensure that our local government is responsive to current needs and forward-thinking and planning for future priorities. There are various planning efforts, which we're hoping that's going to be a, a major focus of our retreat in January, talking about what we're hearing from all those different planning efforts. And so a lot of those will be wrapping up here in '25. And I think what we hear and how we implement those are really going to shape the future of Wheat Ridge for decades to come and really will inform the budget for '26 and beyond. So excited to talk about those at the retreat. So that's really wrapping up. Next steps, we are looking for Q and A this evening from council and a consensus on what to move forward in the budget. Budget adoption right now is scheduled for November 25th, which is, we have a required public hearing and the certification of the property text milli. With that, I think we're ready for questions.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Goff. It was a very thorough presentation. Thank you, staff. And you know, I just kind of had a lot of information. I don't know if there might be a question or two, but I'm going to throw it up to the, to the staff. We'll start with Counselor Weaver.
Sorry, I might unplug the mic here. All right. Thank you all for all of the work, and this is fantastic. And it was an exciting read, very exciting. But no, I, I mean, an austere budget is a tough budget, right? That's a tough budget to write. So I, I really appreciate everybody who went through and really looked at your budgets. And, and I think it's, it's excellent that we're, we're focusing on doing what we, the initiatives we've worked on, continuing to do them better, all of these things. I am, I am going to actually remind council of something that I, I just have been thinking about all through this. And, and it's, and it's going to be a shameless plea for around where I live because what we haven't talked about is how we're going to fix a segment, a, a really dangerous segment of, of street between Miller and Sims. And I, I just, and, and it's all part of all of these projects, right? It's, it's part of open space, it's part of parks, it's part of facility, it's storm water. What I'm concerned about, and, and I don't know where, right? I know, to your point, Maria, I, I know we're over budgeted on all of this, but I, I would ask my, my colleagues to really think about in the next two years with the schools, con- ask my, my colleagues to really think about in the next two years, with the schools consolidating, I am watching kids walk past the farm with no sidewalk in a ditch next to a street and there's a bikeway, supposedly a bikeway, and there's no curb and there's no gutter. And that stretch between Miller and Sims doesn't have sidewalk and, and the kids don't have any other way because of Clear Creek on one side and Lena Gulch on the other. There's no, there's no other place for them to walk. And it's the similar situation that we have, of course, by the high school with 32nd. And, and I'm not sure if there's something that can be put together between sidewalk patching and stormwater patching and, but I'm, I'm just concerned that in our excitement about the Green at 38th, the kids that don't have access to walking, those are primarily lower-income apartment-dwelling students. And I, I am, I am just going to say right now, I understand, I'm speaking from District 3 and, and it's not the side of District 3 that, that we typically think about and, and we really need to address that sidewalk issue with all of those kids walking the Prospect Valley. And, and you're hearing from a person who doesn't have children, but I'm watching them walk on such a dangerous place every morning and every afternoon. And when it gets dark at four and five and I'm still, still seeing kids and parents and bikes going past what is already a pretty dark corridor, I just would really encourage you all to drive down there, to walk down there. The connectivity is, is not like the rest of the city in terms of being able to get to a parkway or even get, being able to get to a safe bikeway. And so if there's any way that we can somehow pull some money out to start creating some safer connectivity, it's just really a question of when. And, and I'm just terrified every day. I'm actually terrified to go get my mail every day because of the speed and, and it's all of these things that we've been hearing about are pieces of this project. And I realize we don't have 200 million to just sort of, you know, clean up that whole corridor between Kipling and Youngfield. But I hope that, and it's, and it's not a sexy project and, and we're not going to get a lot of kudos from the people who necessarily live there. We need to, we need to create some safe ways to, to school for, for these students. So that's my plea. I really am pleased with everything that's been presented in here. I would just really appreciate, and I'm, and I'm asking my, my fellow council members to, to help us find some money to, to create some of this connectivity because while I complain about stormwater, yes, I'd really like the stormwater issue in that area to be fixed, too. But I'm really concerned about the walkability of, of that area for, for parents and students and, and they're young students, of course, that are going to Prospect Valley. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, that's obviously a big concern and I, you know, I don't think maybe we focused on it very well in the presentation tonight, but that is the 2J project. And Maria can maybe talk about the timing. We're in the middle of finalizing design for just what you said. So Maria, you want to add to that?
Yeah, yes. Yes, I don't think it, I listed it specifically, but yeah, the intent would be is to move forward with the next step of design. We took it to about 30%. We'll be coming back with you with that initial work in probably January. To sum up all the comments that we heard, what we don't have, though, is, is full construction costs allocated within 2J. So while we certainly can finish the design and maybe we look at a phased approach to your, to your point is focusing more on that eastern side of that whole segment because as you move further west, there is sidewalks there at least. So looking at, and, you know, maybe it's a half and half sort of a thing to get something moving and, and get something started at least.
Thank you, Counselor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the budget presentation. It's definitely a tighter one than in years past. I know it's harder to look at where we're tightening our belts than it is to say, hey, where do we get to go spend some money on something exciting? And so I appreciate all of the work that's gone into it. I just, I have one quick question about the housing fund, and I understand that it's, it's needed to balance the budget this year. But where's the stopgap on that? Like, when, when do we say, oh, you know, like, I don't want it to happen every year, right? And so, and, and so I wonder if maybe what we need to do is, is look at some policy around how that happens or, you know, what, what things have to, have to happen for us to be able to say, yeah, okay, that can go back to the budget or, you know, something like that.
Yeah, we've talked about that a lot. Our, our intent at this point is just deposit for '24 and pause the diversion or the diverting money for '24 and '25 and focus on making sure that in the '26 budget that we have the funding available to put back in that. And again, we haven't adopted our inclusionary housing program yet, but we are looking at that and that may be a significant revenue source here coming up as well. The, the million dollars we're getting for the American motel project is, is a negotiation that we, that we were able to, to come by without an inclusionary zoning ordinance in place, but they've agreed to it. So we're working on, on increasing revenue as we can. Yeah, our intent is that this is a temporary pause. And then, you know, based on what you heard tonight, I believe we're, we're trying to right-size our general fund operating budget again so that we can provide funding for the housing fund and then also have it reserve at 25%.
Well, and I understand that we currently have enough money in it for the work that we're going to be doing and then also with the, through the Urban Renewal Authority deal with the million dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I just, I guess what I'm asking is, do we need like actual policy around how, how do we, I mean, right, because direction from council was to put it into that account. So like, do we need to make sure we have like actual qualified policy around how do we decide not to do that? You know, does that, does that come to a study session?
Yeah.
Does that only happen at budget, you know?
If you want to restrict yourself that much, I mean, again, it's a large amount of money and that we're diverting from operating, general operating expenditures. And I guess my philosophy is we have it, the housing fund has the money it needs today to do what we're doing. And we have general operating needs that, where we needed that money today. I think you could adopt a policy if you want. It does hamstring you a little bit if you're struggling down the road. If you have a general, if you have a housing fund reserve that has $2 million in it, but you have to cut $2 million out of your general fund operating budget, do you want to, do you want to tie your hands?
Well, I mean, that could also, that could be a part of the process that we, like, if we have the money in the account and we won't be utilizing it, then it goes back to the general fund to be utilized for other things. I mean, that could be part of it.
I think, I think we could. I would recommend that you leave some flexibility and, and it's a, it's an annual budget discussion. I mean, if you want to have a study session about it and look at a policy, I just think the more restrictions you put, put in place on these things, the more difficult it is for us to adopt a budget.
And so you said the inclusionary housing stuff's going to be coming to us Q1, Q2?
I'd ask Lauren here that we're, we're without a housing manager right now, so.
Yes, we have a vacancy in that role right now, but we do have a consultant team engaged evaluating the inclusionary ordinance numbers. So it would be probably, we would hope for late this year, but it may be Q1 next year.
So maybe then it's a discussion that we have in, at the same time as the inclusionary housing.
Another option, too, if I can, real quick, we're, Ally and I have been discussing about bringing back a discussion on our reserve policy and, I'm sorry, our general fund reserve policy. And maybe that's somewhere where, right now, our policy is shoot for 25%. Anything over 35% gets transferred to the capital budget. And that might be an area where you said it maybe at a lower level, anything on, maybe anything over 25% gets moved to housing funds, capital projects or any, or equipment, equipment replacement. So that could be an area, too. Ms. Hoppy.
Great. And then my only other question, Director Donald, you had said that you had, darn it, I missed, you have like 35K in your budget and it's like diving board or climbing wall or something. Could you possibly take a look at the, the diving blocks that the swim teams use? I've been told that they're actually somewhat hazardous, like the teams end up putting like towels down on them because they're so slippery, but they were told there's no money to replace those because there was that, there is that fix that you guys had made for the pool that like ended up not lasting forever. But, but so if, if you have some, some wiggle room in there, if you could potentially look at the diving blocks.
Definitely, we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other than that, thanks very much.
Thank you. Counselor Holtein.
Thank you. I love budget, I love budget night. My, my son was home from college this weekend and we talked about the budget together and, and voted together. It was kind of fun. So I'm going to riff a little bit off of Councilmember Hoppy's comments on the housing affordability. You know, I think, you know, the, we, we don't take a look at pulling the same funds out of like the police money that comes out of the lodging, like when the budget comes up. Is that correct? Like, so like the lodger, lodging tax? So when, like, there are other revenues that, like, other funds that the lodging tax goes into, right? And so.
And that's dictated by voter, voter approval. So that has to go, 5% of our lodging tax has to go in, has to be used for certain purposes and that's why we split it between the crime prevention fund and the capital budget. And it has to stay there, yes.
Okay. I, I, you know, when we set that policy, the intention was that the funds, you know, when we approve short-term rentals in the community, it actually contributes to housing affordability. And so there's an intent with those dollars that is actually around solving issues in our community. So I, we don't need to, you know, continue it more. I would like it to come back for discussion about how, how we look at that. So when we bring back the inclusionary zoning, taking a look at how we direct the housing affordability fund. And I think, I mean, I think, you know, this council, which has changed in makeup a little bit in my, my term, but in general, we've been pretty collaborative and, you know, I, hearing that we've got a million dollars coming in, I think we're doing really great work in housing affordability and it's not a hill to die on that we're not using those funds this year because we're doing a really good job of getting other funds. But I think guardrails in the future are important, so. Okay, my next question, I just have a comment on Councilmember Weaver's 38th Avenue comments. You know, one thing we could take a look at on a shorter term while we're looking at the significant investments is reducing the speed on 38th Avenue. There, so I don't know if we've got funding to take a look at a speed study, but there's just, in my experience working in transportation, 35 miles an hour on that road is just not necessary. So maybe that's a little bit of a shorter-term thing that we could take a look at in the next year. So then, my, in, in general, I thought this was pretty good. I know it's tough when we're trying to dial back after a couple of like really flush and exciting years. It taught me, I was like, oh, the, the funds behind us. Those really good couple of years. You know, I find myself really, before I was on council, you know, I paid a lot of attention to the CIP budget and we just don't have like a really good CIP budget funding source. And, you know, we really took 2J to the voters as like a catalytic investment and improving safety on corridors, really focused on, you know, pedestrians and bikes and that's, that's in here. But to also look how we have to dip into it to, that we haven't been able to actually fund our own CIP, just like street maintenance, is, I think, problematic. So not a hill to die on this year, but I would like us to take a look at more long-term CIP funding revenues so that we're not depending on significant federal investments going begging in Washington, which we've been very successful doing. We really, you know, if, if we're not doing a good job of paving our streets, I think we can't depend on like these injections of loan funding and things like that. So I, I would like us, you know, in 2025 to take a look at CIP revenue sources so that we are not taking away catalytic funding for maintenance. And then my last thing, so one thing that's not in here is I didn't see any mention or prior, just sorry, Ms. O'Donnell, I didn't see any mention or prioritization around funding for us to be able to be in a position to do any school property acquisitions. And I feel like we have expressed here that that's, you know, priority both in District 3 and District 2. And so I'm wondering what type of positioning the city is doing so that should those, when, when those properties come up, that we are positioned to be able to take action on them if that's something that our community supports and we find good programming for.
We're definitely seeking feedback through the pathway program to, you know, create some recommendations. But in terms of funding, the funding that we have in Fund 32 and the Conservation Trust Fund is pretty limited and, and basically most of it is going towards the green. So future funding, it's just, we have to work on that. I don't know if you have, I mean, I can't speak to, I, it's a priority for us, it's just not there.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely on the table. It's not in this budget, unfortunately. We just don't have that source right now. I know there's potential open space, maybe acquisition dollars through Jefferson County Open Space, that would be a resource. Our, our goal was to get the green done in the '24 and '25 budget and then hopefully build up reserves again in Conservation Trust and Open Space and go, go after other grants that could acquire those properties. Excuse me.
So I guess the, the wild optimist in me, you know, is really looking forward to in June, maybe sooner, when our revenues are, we're just, you know, raining down tax.
Much is better, much better than we, I'm hoping to.
And, and so, you know, everyone's going to have their prioritization ideas, but I, I, I'm wondering if there's a way of at least bookmarking that school property acquisition is, is, I mean, it's, it's something we're hearing from our citizens, we've talked about up here. So just, I just don't want to lose track of that as, as a, I know we have a lot of competing priorities, but those are one-time opportunities that once they're lost, they're lost. So I just don't want to lose track of that in the budgeting process, even if there aren't dollars to allot to it. And I think that's it for my notes. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or discussion on the budget? Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So wonderful presentation. Several of my questions were answered throughout and then Councilmember Hoppy addressed the housing fund question that I had. So I think that just leaves, I believe, so it says that we're only adding two FTEs, but then there's three that seem to be allocated in the message. And so I just, I don't know if that.
No, I'm so sorry. And you win a prize, but you have to share it with Counsel Larson. We're catching that typo. It says 2.0 on the, is it the project technician? It should be a 1.0.
I think it was, yeah, it was a formatting issue where it started a list and went one, two.
Okay. Okay. And then my, my other question was just in regards to the outside agency contributions decreased and were leaders on those or like boards and, and in those organizations consulted and apprised of the update and what, what was the reaction?
Yeah, they've been kept informed from the very beginning, so they're in the loop and, you know, they're totally aware and understand that it's a possibility and that when there's limited funds, these things happen.
Okay. And if, as you said, there were a need to come back to council midway through next year for one or any of these organizations for additional funding, that's just something that we could address at that point in time if.
And you're talking about specifically Wheat Ridge Business District.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we're cutting, we're cutting the festival by $35,000 and, I mean, luckily with, you know, the, I mean, not luckily this year, but for next year with the fireworks, that was probably a cost savings. And then, yeah, the Wheat Ridge Business District, local works wasn't hit as heavily and they seem to be, you know, putting mechanisms and, and systems in place to, to try to be more self-sustaining. But if, if there is a need.
Yeah, I think, as I mentioned earlier, I think.
How amenable.
Yeah. I mean, you know, that would be your decision to amend the budget at the time and we'll, we'll let you know at that time if they do come back, if we have the revenues to, to do that. But I, I think that's definitely an option and, you know, we didn't, we didn't confer with Wheat Ridge Business District directly, but as I mentioned earlier, we're just giving them 45,000 right now. But as I mentioned earlier, we're just giving them 45,000 right now, almost at the end of this year. So I think they'll be okay with another 45,000 at the beginning of next year. And then with 45,000 in their bank is my understanding is what they have right now, so.
And are both of you still on the Business District Board? Like, what are your thoughts on that? Is that?
I think it's, with the pipeline that we have, as far as grants and stuff go, I think it's, it's appropriate for right now. And, and we do have a reserve for right now as far as the Business District goes, so. And there's probably some flexibility for how we move forward in the future. So I think it's a good way to go moving forward right now.
Thank you. Additional questions or discussions on the budget? Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. This being my first go-through, I'm sure some of the, the questions I thought of were, they were probably just so dumb that I, I wouldn't ask them. But, but I do have a, a question about ARPA funding. And this is obviously all before I joined the council. But originally, I, I'm, I'm looking at the original allocation of $10 million that was over since 2021, has been used in, in several different specific areas.
Yeah, it was 7.9 was our total, 7.9.
Was the total allocation?
That's what we got, yeah.
Okay. So, so the question is, now that, that funding source will go away, do we feel that the, there, that it creates any issues for us down the road? Question one. And then question two is, it has to do with stormwater. For 2025, we're not allocating any money, any of the ARPA money for the stormwater projects that I really feel like 1.7, 1.725 million probably won't be enough for 2025. So two questions there.
So I'll, maybe I'll start the first question. I'm not sure if you understood your second question. So some of, once this funding's gone, some of these programs will no longer fund. You know, we're funding, as Ally and I mentioned earlier, we're giving money to the community table, to Jefferson Center. Those were one-time gifts. So they will, will no, no longer be able to provide those anymore. You know, the internal programs that we're funding from ARPA are going to have to be absorbed in the general fund budget if we want to continue them. The telephone reporting unit, the homeless navigation program. But a, a lot of this is, is, were one-time grants that we were providing to outside groups. And your second question was about stormwater and it's not being funded out of ARPA?
At least the chart on page 31 of the document shows that he has spent.
Oh.
They have been allocated $1.8 million.
Yes.
And he spent just over $1 million.
You got it?
Yeah. So that's, thank you, Council Larson. It's funny, actually, when I think about that, I don't think, yeah. The, the stormwater is over in 2J. Is it exclusively in 2J, Maria? Or is there any stormwater money in CIP? I think it's exclusively in 2J moving forward, starting in 2025. And then Maria will be coming back to talk to you about the stormwater management plan and I think potentially a fee feasibility study. Is that right, Maria? To consider revenues to support the stormwater program. This, this was, this was emergency repairs. And it speaks a little bit to what Council whole team was saying about, you know, the city has struggled, something Treasurer Miller identified right when he started as treasurer, that wow, we just don't have a good sustaining revenue source for our CIP. The sales types bonds, especially 2J, is huge, transformational. But potentially stormwater fee would be, you know, potentially a great option for you all to consider.
And, and to follow up on, on that point, a stormwater utility fee would be something that we would have to ask the voters to approve?
No, not necessarily. It can be done by council. You can go to the vote if you like, which we have in the past. But it's a fee, it's not a tax. And people argue that, I get it. People disagree with that, but it's legally, it's every, every, almost every community in the metro area has done it. And it's, it's legally considered a fee, so it doesn't require a vote.
So would the sanitation districts be administering that for us? Or how would we be collecting that fee?
We haven't determined that yet.
Thank you. Counselor Snell.
I just wanted to say first, thank you so much. I feel, Ally and Patrick, thank you especially to sat down with me. And with my first budget, I feel very supported and, and I was able to understand things. So thank you for the time you took. And thank you to everyone for the time that you took to get this in its final stages. I know this was a big lift, so thank you. I have one question about homeless navigation, so Mary Ann. With the adjusted, I'm looking specifically at the materials and supplies, which I'm assuming are things like water, socks, things that we hand out to folks. With the, with that number for 25 being projected down, I'm assuming that we are also applying for, or we have gotten grants before. And so do you think that there would be a chance that we could, we would get more?
Yeah, that's exactly what that is. So throughout 23 and 24, we got $100,000 in grant funding through the Colorado Gives Foundation and then the DOLA grant that I mentioned earlier. We just applied for another $75,000 grant through DOLA, so fingers crossed on that. So yeah, we're, that's why it's a little lower into 2025. And hopefully we'll come back with a budget supplemental later. It's for similar things that what we're using it for, the ESG DOLA money this year, it would be for emergency sheltering and bridge housing. This tranche of money, we also use for operational supplies, but now we feel like we're in a good space with operational supplies. So we would use more of the funding if we get fully funded for emergency sheltering and bridge housing only.
Thank you. Counselor Om.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to say thank you to staff, all the hard work. I, I've read through this at least one and a half times. And, and I had a couple, first off, I just want to echo my fellow councilmembers. Councilmember Hoppy asked one of the questions that I saw, the, the money for the STRs. And, and that question has been asked. And then I also want to echo Councilmember Hulteen's request about the parks. That's very important to us. It is a kind of a, you know, once in a lifetime opportunity to, to have that, some of that land as, as a park space. And I don't want to, I just want to keep having those conversations. I understand the financial predicament that we're in. And I don't know if there's a possibility down the road if, if, and that's the big underlying word, if the, the park land over by Discovery Park gets sold, could that be something that we could use funding for potential parks? And, and then some of the other questions I do have is, in my district, we definitely have some, the, the over, you know, the surface water issues with like Dover that we've talked, I've talked to Maria about at 41st. And, and then there's another one on the east side of, of Wadsworth where they were having. And this is something that becomes a problem when we have the really, really big storms. And how do we, how do we mitigate those? You know, be it some type of bio swell. And so that's kind of over, you know, maybe some of those types of things might help to mitigate, you know, it's not as much water going underneath, in, in the pipes underneath the street. So that's, that's kind of, kind of one issue I had. And then, of course, I, we've had a lot of discussions in my district about traffic. And, and I don't want to lose sight of that of, of what can we do to slow down Dover? Dover's, you know, one of those where, what can we do, you know, to try to test some things out? Because I, my constituents, they're, they're, they're really, you know, they ask, they really want to get something going. They want something tangible. They want to know when is it going to happen? And I, I know we've had a lot of discussions about it, so I just don't want to lose sight of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stites, Mayor Protem Stites, pardon me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. I just want to thank staff again. I think this is a great presentation and I think you guys took, I know some of you had to take some hits as far as your budgets go. And, and, and I know as far as some of the outside programs and, and stuff, had to take some hits and, and appreciate the Business District, Carnation Festival, Local Works, being able to kind of shake off all those hits and, and move on for this year. And, you know, budget season seemed a lot more fun a couple of years ago, not going to lie. And I remember one night, I remember we spent like $10 million one night in like 10 minutes and it was really fun and it was really cool. And we were making it rain and it was really neat. But, you know, unfortunately, this isn't that this year. And I think that you guys have done a great job kind of figuring out where we can cut and, and where we can move forward. So I, Counselor Weaver, I will second, if we can start the 2J, some of that project sooner as far as traffic goes on 38th Avenue, specifically between Miller and Sims, that would be huge. And then I had a meeting with a constituent today about Color Strand Elementary. And I think that that's a big thing that we really need to start looking at because those are huge assets to our community, especially Color Strand Soccer Field, things like that. So if we can look at that and, and find some money for that in the next couple of years before Jeffco finds a way to spend those assets, it would be good. So other than that, thank you for all the hard work on this. Thank you.
So I'm not going to start over. Somebody else must have had a live mic, so. Anyway, do we have consensus on moving the budget forward to the, okay, thank you very much. We, then we'll have the budget come back to us on November 25th. We will be back here next week in the council chambers for a regular meeting. Mr. Goff, I think my agenda says staff reports. What do you have tonight for staff reports?
Oh, laptops. We would like to collect your laptops this evening. We're going to do updates on them so that they work for you. If, if you need it, let us know. We can figure out another way to get it updated. But love to get them updated for you. Any staff, any staff, anything, updates from staff? Nobody? Maria's got something.
We've got opportunities to ride the paver Wednesday morning for anybody who wants to. Anytime between about eight and noon.
Trunk Retreat is next Saturday. Trunk Retreat is next Saturday at 4 o'clock at Anderson Park. Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Any elected officials' reports that we should take tonight? Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. I didn't really thank staff sufficiently in my comments earlier. I know this was a hard budget and, but actually, I do want to say, when I read it, of course, I'm like looking for the things to like bitch about a little bit. But like what I found was that we're actually doing a great job of serving our community. And the things that are in this budget are the things that I'm really proud about, but our city. So I feel good about the budget. That having been said, I would like a consensus. I'd like to see if I have a second to bring CIP funding mechanism study to our council. That was it. That's all I got. Thank you. And let's talk CIP.
Okay, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.
Oh, nobody else? Just one?